We will now visit Ted. Mr. Mosby. For?
We shall overcome. We shall overcome. We shall overcome someday. I'm glad you listened.
Delay from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mosby. I'll now open the floor to public comments. The policy chair will read the policy regarding them.
Be advised, oh, be advised. Public comments will be heard in accordance with policy two, colon, two, three, zero. Public participation at board meetings for the Board of Education and petition to the Board. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. If your comments are about matters involving students or personnel, please refrain from disclosing names. We do have a lot of people here tonight. If someone has, for the most part, expressed concerns that you have, if you would allow others to speak who may have differing opinions, we greatly appreciate that. We're going to also ask that you state your name and your address for the record. Do we need to send the mic out to the front? Okay. No, they have it set over there. I didn't see it. Public comments?
I have one. My name is DaKeisha Howard, and I'm a board member. This board has been lacking in love, joy, inspiration, appreciation, and love for this district. And I am so disappointed. I'm so disappointed. We supposed to be inspired for this district. We supposed to be the inspiration for this district. I've seen hatred for one another. This board is broken, and I am embarrassed to be a part of this board as of May the first. If we don't have love for one another, we do not have love for this district. You cannot possibly have love for this district if you don't have love for one another. Hatred for the superintendent and board members. All I can say is you guys, voting is like oxygen. It's a must. And I have no idea what I'm here for. I'm here. I'm a board member, as I'm asked to say.
Excuse me. This is a business meeting for this district. We will not have any more clapping after this.
Ignore that. You, the people, can clap if you want to. You can, you can gavel that gavel a hundred and two times. The people can clap if they want to. You can't dictate people. Can I finish? Can I go forward? I want to be slow and sweet, very slow and sweet. You know how they make a comment about older people, and they say that's a sweet old lady? Well, that's not true for Board President Margaret McDaniel. That's an evil old lady. For 26 years, she have ruled this district the same way she's trying to rule it tonight. You have multiple board members that have no idea why they're even here. But her, along with Perkins, that has a smirk on her face, ran on transparency. Is it transparent, I ask, that your husband physically assaulted a student, and the board is covering it up? Do the community know about that? Where's the transparency? Yeah, the smirk is going real quick off your face. Yeah, I know. It probably don't because you don't care. I have, I have conversations with other board members, or a certain board member on this particular board, cursing out and dogging the superintendent, calling her all type of bees, what she gonna do, how she gonna drag her off? And according to how this goes tonight, that will be going publicly, Facebook Live. So just letting that particular board member know that. As I move forward, Margaret McDaniel stated that I was unethical, Mr. Mosby was unethical, for giving opportunities to people they call his family members to the district. Well, let's just kind of read a little bit. Brian McCullen, Margaret McDaniel's grandson, terminated. Why? Because he had issues with managers at Preferred Meals when he worked for the school district. They brought him back because she fought for him to come back. He was terminated again by threatening students that he would sleep with their mothers and hit them with wet paper towels. Let's move forward. In April 2019, they brought him back again, and this time they terminated him indefinitely because he grabbed and pushed and threatened a special ed student by stating he will F them up in 2019. Because of Dr. Kalitha White would not bring him back, this is why we're here today, because of her family members. Let's continue to keep moving forward. Perkins, like I said, husband which works for the district, May 2023, grabbed a student at Barack Obama School multiple times, pushing them against the wall, and it is captured on video, very foible. Contracts were given under this particular board president to Michael Carmine, the previous board superintendent, where people are unethical, right? The board superintendent, along with this board president, gave contracts to Michael Carmine in 2007, 2008, 2010, upwards of $450,000 of money and still counting. And I can go on and on. Jackie Jordan, relative she has on the board, Brittany Jordan, Drake Fire, and Iris Whitaker. Multiple family members by this particular board, but everybody else except for them was unethical. You a liar, and the truth ain't in you.
When we asked for three minutes.
You talking to him. I'm done. Sit down. You, you know how I operate. I don't listen to none of your rules. You know that.
Excuse me, you do not have permission.
I don't care what permission you give me. I take my own permission. You want to sabotage the superintendent, but the last superintendent gave contracts to her son, and you continue to apply that and want to bring him back.
Where are you?
What's wrong with you? And shame on y'all. Running a sister in the mud, 30 years of excellence in education to run in the mud as she getting ready to retire, but you let the last superintendent, for 16 years, do what she did. Shame on y'all. Now I'm done.
Alrighty. Thank you. I don't know if it's Commissioner White. I don't know which one. It's the trustee White. So I was. Jake Atkins, and I don't have to give my address. That's against. You don't need to know that privacy. That's a privacy. I do have property in 163. Do you have any other questions, Madam President? Thank you for your time. Unfortunately, during this last election, I had the honor to work the poll. During that opportunity, I met Ms. Perkins. I knew Ms. Jordan, a longtime supporter and friend. I knew Ms. Daniel from her last. And I knew Dr. And I knew Dr. DuPay from her tenure on this board. All these board members who were elected, Ms. McDaniel, Ms. Perkins, and Dr. DuPay, who was reelected, gave an oath of office. In that oath of office, they stated that I show respect taxpayers' interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school board district assets. As we are here tonight, they are not doing that. I shall abide by the majority decision of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. Two of these board members I spoke to, Madam President, McDaniel and Ms. Jordan. And lastly, I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district towards fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. I believe that Ms. McDaniel, Ms. Perkins, Dr. Dupie, DuPay, and Jackie Jordan have failed the oath that they've taken. The reason that I feel that they failed that oath is because this current superintendent, Dr. Kalitha White, has stood behind this community, has offered cohesion, has offered unity after a long tenure of her predecessor. It was brought to mind after talking to Ms. McDaniel on last night. It was brought to my discovery that they feel that Dr. White has not communicated with her predecessor on an extension of contract that they had given to Dr. Carmine. The first, she stayed as the superintendent designate for one year. And then, upon her taking the office of superintendent, this board decided that they did not want to enforce that, that relationship. And so therefore, we have people who are trying to bring people back to the district at an outrageous cost per diem, per day, which is not in the best interest of town. I'm not finished. And so therefore, we are continuing to see an outrageous board that wants to control us. But it is very important that you, the taxpayers, get out and make sure that you. Ms. Perkins, you had the right. You stood out there doing early voting, and you gave me your word on integrity. And you have not.
Three minutes, and time is up.
But this is a. We, you can't stop people from speaking.
You have three minutes according to our rules.
Well, I have the evidence. Anybody who wants to continue to be educated, here's the evidence, and we will hold them accountable for the next two years. Every vote counts, but I can promise you. Ms. Jordan will not be back on this board. You're not in charge. You're not the president. Madam President, no rubber of order.
I have already got one.
Thank you, then. I will stop at your orders.
You learn order, Ms. Perkins, but you don't know nothing about it. And you are disgrace to our kids, and I'm so. I'm so glad you retired. I wish I could go to IRMF and put a complaint in the issue to stop that hinting.
Good evening, board members, teachers, federations, park forests. Do you need my address? Can I just say Michelle Obama School? In the last five years, this district has been reconfigured twice. We shut down once due to COVID and spent another year remote learning. Our students are doing the best they can, and although they are happy to be back in school full-time without masks, they are still recovering from the remote learning and readjusting to new staff and new students. We have hemorrhaged staff over the last five years. Last year alone, we lost over 35 staff members from the district. This year, so far, I'm counting at least 15, if not more. There's people who are still out there, who are leaving the district. Last year, the union asked our members about why they stay or why they leave. We wanted to share those results with the board, but those results were not welcomed. There was a state survey done this year, but the people were hesitant to fill it out because they were not sure that their input would matter. We are supposed to be negotiating a new contract right now, but two meetings have been canceled. We have staff waiting to make decisions about staying or leaving until they see how the contract looks. But it's unfair to ask them to wait indefinitely. This uncertainty and instability happening in the district right now is of high concern to all of us. We are begging for stability, transparency, and positive forward progress. We cannot go back to how things were before COVID for many reasons. We are in a new era, and we need to ensure our staff and our students have stable, consistent administrative support in an environment where we all feel safe, respected, and valued. I know that the board always has challenging and difficult decisions to make, and it is a thankless job. But I want to take a moment to thank you for your time, the work that you do, and for ensuring that the decisions that you make tonight are what's best for the district. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, staff, the resident of Park Forest and Chicago Heights and elected officials. My name is Walena Joseph, the owner of a women minority cleaning company, Royalty King Cleaning, who bid it, who submitted a bid not once, but three times for Park Forest, Chicago Heights, School District 163, for the janitorial maintenance and supervise contract. Although other companies may be well-known and have been in the industry longer than us with our exceptional reputation, proven expertise, and commitment to cleanliness and safety, we stand out as the premier choice for maintaining a healthy and safe environment. Let's devout into key reasons why Arcade Cleaning would be a perfect business partner. Exceptional expertise in educational cleaning and toll plaza cleaning. Arcade Cleaning has extensive experience and provides professional cleaning and services to educational institutions. We understand the unique challenges and requirements associated with maintaining a clean and hygienic environment in schools. Our team of highly-trained OSHA 10 and 30 certified professionals and equipped with the knowledge and skills necessary to handle various cleaning tasks specific to educational facilities, ensuring the well-being and comfort of students, staff, and visitors. We, we are currently contracted with four Indiana toll plazas, operating 24/7 with a traffic of 20,000 daily. During our peak season, which is now April through October, peak days, which is Thanksgiving and Christmas, the number increased to 25,000. Our strict adherence to healthy and safety standards, we prioritize the health and safety of students, staff, and visitors. We strictly adhere to the industry best practice and follow the relevant health and safety regulations with ongoing concern of infection disease. Is well-prepared to implement proper sanitation disinfect protocol to eliminate spread of germs and provide a hygienic environment for everyone in the school. Chief Dr. Teres, the World Health Organization, warns America in the news on last Wednesday, on, on May 24th, that the, that, that, excuse me, of the threat of another serious pandemic that's on the rise. Here at Arcade Cleaning, we are certified.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Do anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak publicly?
Will you hear you?
I'm gonna hear you.
Anyone else have anything to public comment?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alexis, and I'm here to support Walena with the Arcade Cleaning. As a conclusion, Arcade Cleaning is the ideal choice for this contract. With our expertise in educational cleaning, comprehensive, and customizable service, strict adherence to health and safety standards, reliable, flexible, and committed to environmental sustainability. Arcade Cleaning will ensure that the school maintains clean, safe, and healthy environment for students, staff, and visitors. By partnering with Arcade Cleaning, this shows the children of each school in this district that it's people that look like them working to maintain a clean and safe environment, possible employment to parents whose children attend Park Forest, Chicago High School District. This will allow board members, staff, and visitors to focus on its core mission of education, knowing that the cleaning needs are in the hands of trusted and reliable partners. Thank you for your time and consideration. We really appreciate it.
Are there any other public comments?
My name's Corey White. Click the white button. Been top couple weeks. Spent my entire life in schools with mom. Education is a pillar of our family. But I was taught it's a pillar of the community. Particularly low-income, predominantly black, minority communities. Education requires investment, consistent commitment to excellence. This is what I was taught. I invested my own education. I have two sons, five and three. I invested their education. I've been on the boards of charter schools, built tutoring programs, South Side, Chicago, Woodland area. Been where help is needed. I was taught help when you can, if it's needed. Never seen anything like this. It's embarrassing. What's happening today is a problem with education in America. It's self-dealing, greed, negligence. I didn't come to play for a fight. Came here, say, I'm proud.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joya Allright. I am the building secretary at Michelle Obama School. I've been in this district for about four years. I just wanted to say I've had multiple opportunities, and I want to say thank you because it was all from Dr. White. She believed in me. We've had several talks. She tells me, keep my head up, before I go back to school. So she is that inspiration to keep on going. What's going on, the weather is going on, it shouldn't, it's not right. There's a certain way to do certain things, and I don't know what's going on by y'all doing this to her. But in my eyes, when somebody gives me several opportunities and pushes me to build as a person, it ain't right if it ain't Dr. White. That's it.
Oh, hey, everybody. I'm Darian Hills, a theater teacher at Michelle Obama. During the pandemic, I was a musical theater performer, and I lost every job that I had in two weeks. Just canceled shows, after shows. Kalitha called me, and she said, come teach at our school. I've been trying to get you for years, and you ain't got no job. And I came, and I started teaching at Michelle Obama, and I wanted to buy a show for the school. And the third year, after me working hard and following what everybody wanted me to do as a theater teacher, they let me buy a show. They let me buy The Lion King. Kalitha let me buy The Lion King. She also helped send all of my students to see The Lion King downtown Chicago, where the students got $50 for their $75 ticket, and their parents got the other 25. Parents told me that they couldn't go because they couldn't afford the $25 ticket. And I reached out to Kalitha. I reached out to some of my friends, and we got every single kid to go to see The Lion King. And then not only did we see The Lion King, we performed The Lion King here at School District 163. I got so many emails that this is the best show that we've had in years. And it has been such a joy to be able to bring The Lion King to School District 163 and bring School District 163 to The Lion King downtown Chicago, where the students got to see what they were going to do. So I want to thank Kalitha for believing in me and for grabbing me and bringing me here. Thank you so much. Also, I got my master's. So I also have my master's in education. I'm a theater teacher here at Michelle Obama, and I just want to say thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Judy Hoff Thorne. I served on the school board of education for eight years. And the entire time that I was on the board, Dr. White was my superintendent. So I said I would stay out your business as long as y'all didn't mess with my superintendent. So here I am. Dr. White has been under attack ever since she, this new board, took his seat. On May 1st, since then, there has been a meeting nearly every weekend in an attempt to destroy the reputation and the legacy of this great leader for 32 years of education. She has devoted her life to educating our students. She said that she would retire at the end of the next school year to prepare her staff for the transition. So what's the rush, everybody? That's my question to you board members that were elected by this community. My question now as a community member is why? Dr. White was just evaluated by this school board and has met and exceeded her goals. She has never been written up for any disciplinary action, performances, issues. So why? Why not one of you board members has expressed any unsatisfactory job-related issues to Dr. White or has given her the opportunity to correct anything? So why? Is this person, is this a personal vendetta for Margaret McDaniel, whose grandson was fired for hitting a student? Or Kimberly Elmore Perkins, who was reassigned to second grade and refused to take her position? So she decided that she was gonna be the boss and run for the Board of Education. Personal vendetta? Or was it Dr. Dupay, Christina, who brought an attorney to a meeting with the superintendent without disclosing that you had legal representation and not giving the superintendent the opportunity to have legal representation as well? Or Jackie Jordan, who I loved you so much while I was on this school board, Jackie, but perhaps it was because you was giving confidential information to these other community members and disclosing the superintendent's health conditions that we as board members could not receive our packets to the board meeting to avoid confidential information being leaked to the public? These four board members have been led by Dr. Joyce Carmine and she has a personal vendetta against Dr. White because she ran for the interim superintendent position and she told her not to. This is reminiscent of a runaway slave to me. She ran away to get freedom. And now, and this is a witch hunt. This is a witch hunt and you guys have, uh... Once the slave was found and was brought back to the master, she was severely punished and beaten and public humiliated to serve notice to you other plantation residents. What will happen if you don't obey your master? You will be beaten, you will be prosecuted if your disobedience against your master will cause them to be hurt, embarrassed, and, oh my God, separated. They will separate you, they will isolate you, and they will humiliate you publicly unless you, if necessary. This is a personal issue, not a personnel issue. The resignation letter of those already began and were to come if Joyce Carmine takes her seat back as the interim superintendent. Nobody wants to hear. Who did y'all consult? Nobody wants Dr. Joyce Carmine. This is an excellent superintendent. And this is a shit show and y'all are an embarrassment to this school and its school community and nobody supports this. And bigger worse, congratulations. These are the people that you endorsed Park Forest Teachers Federation. These are the people you supported that is lynching this superintendent. You all should be ashamed of yourselves, ashamed of yourselves. You are supposed to be a voice of the community. You are not speaking for us. You should be ashamed. It's shameful. It's shameful. It's shameful. It's shameful. This is a public thing. Thank you.
I first would like to say, my name is Dr. Felix Anderson. Real quick, my name is Dr. Felix Anderson. And I was hired by Dr. White, Kalitha White. I came from up north where they're way more aggressive up north and I had to learn the temperament that here in District 163. And I just want to say there's multiple things that happened that people don't know as I'm looking around, the only principal in here. So I just want to say to Dr. White there's been tough conversations we've had and every conversation was about these kids. Every single conversation. And I was raised up, my parents stood in this floor and this district's over 70 years old and I stood here and accepted the first principal state award for this District 163. There was so much shade thrown about that to the point where I questioned if I wanted to return to this district because it's to be about kids and not about trying to start some nonsense. And so through the pandemic you brung us through as a staff, as leaders, through the merger, I didn't know about Beacon Hill and nothing else. And I understood the importance of the decisions you made and why you made those decisions. I also want to bring to your attention that when you are in a leadership role as a superintendent, there's gonna be decisions that's gotta be made that everybody don't agree with. I've had some run-ins. I'm not gonna name names. I'm gonna keep it nice and clean up here. Professionally, I've been held to a different standard with this woman. And I just want to say thank you. And I want to say thank you because whether this is my last stop in two years from now or five years from now, whatever, I just want to say 100% these brown babies are better with this woman. That's all I want to say. I don't know. I just want to say, I don't know 15 years from now, in the past, 10 years, none of that. I just know this woman right here. And some of the things when I interviewed her that she brung to the table and asked me to ask questions on, I knew I hadn't seen nothing like this coming from her. And so, you know, I know we on time and all this and I can ramble on about her greatness. But she's always in the schools. Every single teacher she knows about her by name. Every child in my building, there's 200 of them. She know about faith by name. You know, the investment for these kids builds a person like Dr. Anderson standing in front of you. And my fearlessness to put these kids forward is unmatched. And I want to say thank you. I really do. This dropped at our lap and people weren't scared when things like this happened. But I'm gonna stand here with my feet down and not place no blame on anybody. But I'm gonna say, look at the strength of this woman and what she did do for us, right? I don't know what this is about, but I will say that 100% in my heart, I know genuinely you did an excellent job for this. You did an excellent job for these kids and I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shanita Jones. You all just awarded me my 25-year, 25th-year bill. I know many of your faces, right? Some I have to speak to a few times over. But Dr. White, I would like to personally thank you for always believing in me, having me all the way down in Springfield, working and presenting and just bringing things together, representing School District 163. I'd like to know from the board, I know this is a comment section, but before you go into closed section, are you all going to let us know what's going on? I'm putting the pieces together, but I just want to know, are you all going to disclose the real focus? You said no, Ms. McDonald? Okay. Thank you.
Transparency.
They're asking me to ask why not? Is that a question? Why not? They're asking me to ask why not and I'm asking why not?
On the transparency you ran on.
How many minutes I have left?
Good evening, everyone. Joshua Harrison, building secretary. And I come today as not only a worker, but a product of 163, a community member also, you know. Mr. Anderson says that he doesn't know the last 15 years of this district, but I know I was in the district. Dr. White, as my superintendent, as a student, getting better opportunities even now, where do you see a 19-year-old in the position that I am, making the money that I am? But Dr. White, she did not look at my age. She looked at what I can bring to the table, my stance in the professional rounds. And I really thank you for that. I truly do. And I told her before, as once as my principal, even when she wasn't my principal, Dr. White still knew me by my name. I came back five years later and Dr. White still knew Joshua Harrison. If that doesn't mean something, I don't know what does. I'll tell you, she walks in the building, I've been to 162 with Blondine and she walks through the building and she may not know everyone in the building, but Dr. White, she walks through and she'll say, "Hi Jenna, hi Shawnee." She knows our names. Personality is what I ask for when you make a decision. I'm not saying her predecessor is not gonna do the job better, but a question again, why was she taken away from the job? She was about to retire. It wasn't that serious? I just feel it wasn't off a personal opinion. But as many of you, I voted for you guys to be on the board. I hope that you guys come with a better solution. And I need something better than Dr. White, but it's gonna be very, very hard to top.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Evelyn Albright. I am a third-grade teacher at Mohawk Primary Center. I just want to give a little bit of background about me for those who may not know it. I am a product of School District 163. I've been a resident of Park Forest, Chicago Heights for 46 years. I went to Blackhawk, went to Lakewood when it was there. I went to what is now Michelle Obama and then I graduated from Ritchie's. Once I came home from college, when I went away, came back, had children, didn't really know what I wanted to do. Had no idea. Ms. LaJoyah Albright is my oldest daughter, by the way. As I was trying to figure out what I wanted to do, I met Dr. Carmine. My aunt worked for Dr. Carmine in a different district. Dr. Carmine said to me, "Come and work in the school." I'm like, "I've never worked in a school before. I can't do that. I don't know what I would do." She said, "Just come and try it." So I started two hours a day in a different school district as a lunch supervisor, lunch and recess supervisor. I only worked for a few months before a grant that I had to go to school for nursing came through. I was afraid to approach her and tell her that now the hours for school conflicted with the hours that I had to work. My aunt said, "Mm, you gotta go to her, not me." So I went in the office afraid and she lifted her head and she looked at me. She said, "Let me explain something to you." She said, "Don't ever apologize for an opportunity to better yourself. You take it. If you want this job, when you're done, you come back. It's here for you." Didn't see her anymore until two weeks after I graduated. Her mother had taken ill. I had just finished from nursing and she asked me to do in-home care to take care of her mother. I was scared, so I said no. Next time I saw her was when I came to register my own children for School District 163. I was walking in the building here, the 21st, and I heard a little voice behind me call my name. And I turned around and she said to me, "Is that you, Evelyn?" I said, "Yes." And she asked me what I was up to, what I'd been doing, yada, yada, yada. I wasn't working. She asked me again to come and work for School District 163. I said, "163? What are you doing here?" She told me she was coming in as superintendent. Dr. Carmine wrote her hand letter written of recommendation for me.
Never been to a board meeting as long as I've been working in this district. It's been about six years and I'm here tonight. My name is Ms. Ashley Easley. If you don't know me, I am the executive assistant to the superintendent, Dr. Kalitha White. And all I could think about today was the movie Lean on Me. I grew up off that movie. You know, because we're here for a reason. We hit a fight. We get to stand up for what's right. And I was raised by a gracious woman, a caring woman. And my mother, she always told us, "If you don't have nothing nice to say, don't say nothing at all." But I chose to speak kindness today. And I go by that motto, excellence without excuses. And I feel like ever since May 1st, our board been having so many excuses for us to achieve excellence. Our kids is not the number one focus here. And that should be the main focus. That's the reason why we all here, right? That's the reason why you sign teacher contracts, administrators, for the kids. I'm sure Dr. White have raised many of generations in this district. Teachers have taught many generations in this district. So you gotta go to the beginning before you even try to get to the end because we not there yet. And it's like, you gotta put your feelings in your back pocket and sit on it, you know? And let her do her job. But I'm glad, you know, sometimes some things like this has to happen because you all need to hear from the community and hear from the people. But most importantly, Dr. White, thank you for the opportunity that you have given me. It has been a blessing to work with you these past custom months that I have worked for you. Since you asked me, I said yes. I didn't even have to think about it. Thank you. And thank you to this district who I have served and who have also serviced me within these past six years. But while you all make your decision tonight, trying to look for a new executive assistant as well as I have put in my resignation as of June 7th. So make sure you discuss that in closed session as well because it's real. Thank you.
So I don't know what the rules are because I am honestly not a public speaker. I really do not feel comfortable speaking in front of people, so I don't know what the rules are. I understand my three minutes, so I'm gonna make the last part of what I had to say quick in case this is breaking the rules. The reason why I mentioned all of that is to say that I would not be in School District 163 working had it not been for Dr. Carmine opening that opportunity for me. She's who brought me in. So I have nothing negative to say about Dr. Carmine. When I came into the district, I started working at Algonquin School. When I came in, there was a principal who was in position, who wasn't doing, she wasn't doing things the way it should be legally. She was doing some things that were not legal. A staff member overheard some things she said inside of the bathroom and reported that. That principal ran out the door and never returned. The rest of that year, there were interim principals that came in while they were interviewing. The very first principal that I had in School District 163 in 2006 was Dr. Kalitha White. I saw who I modeled myself after every day. And anybody who knows me knows, I'm hands-on. I'm gonna do anything and everything I can for the betterment of our children. I got that from seeing Dr. Kalitha White on her knees in the gym doing praise dances with children. She wasn't too big and she didn't say, "You go do this or I'd like this done." She did it herself. When I thought that my son was old enough to stay home and watch my younger children so that I could go to work, it was Dr. Kalitha White who said to me, "That's not his baby. That's yours. You stay home and take care of your own child." And sadly, I'm gonna say this, and I don't know if you remember this, Dr. White, but Dr. White said to me, "Because baby, guess what? If anything happens to your children, your job will replace you in a heartbeat." And now here we are today. I also want to say that a lot of things that have happened over the years before Dr. White was superintendent. Within the buildings throughout the district, when things were not right, I had a voice that spoke up on my behalf. And that was Ms. McDonald. So I have no favoritism here. I have love for Dr. White. I have love for Ms. McDonald and I have love for Joyce Carmine. My most love comes when right is right and wrong is wrong. And if I do something I'm not supposed to do, there's going to be a conversation. There's going to be a write-up. There's going to be disciplinary action. There's going to be a, "You need to do this or..." I will finish by saying, "Where is all of that for Dr. White?"
Good evening. My name is Lauren C. Martin, Mrs. Martin, or Elbow, as some people know me. Forgive me, my voice. I have a two-year-old son and I teach, so I use my voice a lot. But I would like to start off by saying that I wouldn't even be here in this position as a permanent, the permanent sub and guest teacher for the district. as a permanent, the, the permanent sub and guest teacher for the district if it wasn't for Dr. White. My God, within ninety days, within ninety days, this woman advocated for me. Principal Anderson, I can start dropping names. I mean, this is incredible, the amount of, of love, support that I have received. And it didn't even start there. First, I graduated from Howard University with my BA in Broad Cash Journalism, minor in acting. Then Northwestern University with my master's in Communications. I was told that I was overqualified. I was told that there wasn't a seat at the table for me. But then here came District 163. And then they offered me an opportunity that I was told that doors were shut for me. I came in doing Genius Week, doing motivational speaking. I, I have my own company. I have my not-for-profit, my for-profit. They gave me a seat at the table to mentor girls and to do, and do what I'm passionate about, what my purpose and my cause is. And then she's my sorority. Hello. And, and she didn't, she didn't have to show that adds a extra special, but she didn't even know that. You see what I'm saying? And she still was making moves on my behalf before she even knew that I was her sorority. So this is why I speak volumes about her character. I speak volumes about the lady that is in front of me because she's a hard worker. She's a woman of integrity. She's special. And she made me feel special. And it's hard to make a person feel special within ninety days. But like I said, my ninety days has been amazing because not only did I come in being the permanent sub and guest teacher for the district, Dr. White promoted me. Hello. Oh, 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 when I come back in the fall, I, I, I'm coming back as a reading and math interventionist. So, thank you. And that's because of Dr. White. That's because of Dr. White. So I stand here today showing you the, the proof is in the pudding. She's not just talking it, she's walking it. And, and to whom much is given, much is required. So she has an assignment. And she's fulfilling her assignment. She's fulfilling her assignment each and every day. I, I mean, to meet a woman of her greatness, to meet a woman of her caliber, to meet a woman that goes above and beyond, that goes the extra mile. That is something that our community needs. That is something that our children need. Can you imagine how I felt like there wasn't a seat for me at the table when I graduated from college? What would these babies think? If, if our leadership is not right, then who will lead? If our leadership is not right, then who will lead? We got the best one sitting in front of us. So like I said, I, I, I'm the proof is in the pudding. I was only here for ninety days and this woman not only brought me back in, oh my, okay, but she's dope, and you should know.
In my brief and short, hey, Dr. White. One, the Dr. White. I love you. My name is Devora Dunklin Sutton, and I have been in the district for twenty years. And I'm very proud to be a part of this district because they have become my family. I had two children as a single mother, and two main principals got a hold of me coming here. One was Dr. Erica Patterson, and the other was, was Dr. White. I came here with nothing. They gave me a job. I worked that job. I worked hard. I, and they've always encouraged me, seeing how hard I worked. Finish school. Why won't you finish school? Because of their encouragement, I have earned a bachelor's and a master's degree. And not only that, they continue to push me forward. And I also wanna speak on the other administrators that are sitting in the back. Dr. Nocke, uh, Ms. Val Valente, Dr. Johnson. I'm gonna sit up here and be one-hundred with y'all. They all got on my nerve ass every point in time. Y'all do too. But let me tell you something. It was for my good. A lot of it was for my good. What I'm hearing right now is so petty. It's so petty. To whom much is given, much is required. You are required to do the right thing. I will agree with anything. I'm looking for, I'm coming here looking for a dead body on the floor. I'm coming here looking for something to be in disarray of some sorts. We gonna be real right here. We've heard a lot about a lot of people up in here. Without seeing up here, please cast a first stone. Please cast a first stone. Nepotism, please, my foot. My son got a job here too. And what? Because guess what? I am going to pull up whoever I can from their bootstraps. Now, for the wrong reason, no, absolutely not. If there is somebody better qualified that is within this place, that's the person that earned that job. My son does not come before that, so let me clear that up real clear. But the thing is, is we all help each other. And I wanna say thank you for your help. Thank you for looking at me and looking at the people that I can help and say, "Hey, they can do a really good job." But we gotta stop this personal agenda mess. This, this mess is personal. And then, like, let me say this too. I got much love for everybody in this building. But the way that some people are coming across, you're coming across too messy, so can't nobody hear you? Can't nobody hear you when you messy and loud? We gotta do what's right, but how can I hear you? How can I hear the problem clearly if you just causing chaos? Chaos is loud. Chaos is wrong. I hear it. I hear it. I got you. But what we are responsible for is doing the right thing, making the right choices. All of you have helped us. That's not, that's a given. Everybody in this room has been a help to somebody. But what's right is right and what's wrong is wrong. And she said it. We gotta do what's right. This woman has led greatly. I got some good things about Dr. Carmine too. But I tell you what, I was tired of getting teed. I was always treated like a person by you, and I thank you for that. I was always treated like an equal. You never looked down on me, and I never felt like crap, and you never talked down to me. And I'm grateful for that. I really appreciate you. And all I know is God don't like ugly, and he ain't too keen on pretty.
Good evening. My name is Phaedra Richardson. I am the medical district coordinator at Michelle Obama School. I live in Park Forest. Um, I've been in the district for, this is my tenth year. I left the district for a year and came back, and Dr. White hired me back. So for one, I wanna say thank you. But my children are also products of the district. And um, when I got divorced and I moved to Park Forest, I was running around trying to figure out where the school district was, and Dr. White's name was on the building. And I've known Dr. White for twenty-five years because she was my oldest child's kindergarten teacher. And I knew there can only be one Kalitha White because the name is so original. And so I came in looking for her, and it was just a coincidence. My children were homeschooled, and when I decided to get divorced, I had to put my children to school, which was a transition, a big, hard transition for my children. Dr. White helped us to navigate with how to get my children adjusted to school. Um, she has been very instrumental in communicating with me because I'm a helicopter mom. I've been a helicopter mom since my child was in her kindergarten class. And she schooled me then, and she schooled me even when it was time to put them back into school. But always in the most loving way and best way for me to learn how to let them grow and watch from, from behind. But um, as an administrator, I wanna say thank you because she's given me many opportunities to grow. Um, I've worked with several of you all, and um, I work hard. My children have come up working under me, volunteer. They've done volunteer hours, and everybody knows the J Crew. They come in, they help with shows, they help with whatever. Whenever I'm doing something, my kids are always there doing it as well. And she remembers that. And when it came time for them to be hired, my children were also hired through the district. My children are hard workers. My daughter's an art teacher here. My other daughter is a school mentor, and they are making a very good reputation for themselves, working hard. And so I just wanna say thank you to you for seeing that, for trusting us. Dr. White also encouraged me to go back to school and get my degree, finish my degree. And I've done that as well. And so I just wanna say thank you for your, um, every opportunity that you've given me. And I ask that the board just really hear the things that we are saying here about this woman. This woman is elegant. Um, lots of people ask me questions about her when she first became superintendent because they always talk about how she was my child's kindergarten teacher. And I tell them, "She's consistent. She's the same person she was as a kindergarten teacher as she is now." She was a rule follower. She was very transparent. She was very loving. She scold when she needs to, but also in a loving way. She gives reprimands, but also in a way that you can grow from it. So I think that is a very important skill for our children to learn and to have. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Clark, and I'm, uh, too, a permanent sub here in the district. I actually taught here ten years ago. Um, I taught social studies and science under, uh, Dr. Mitch several years ago. And then I did, um, come back because of Dr. White. And I'm a permanent sub in Dr. Anderson's school. Go Blackhawk! Yes! And I wanna echo a couple of different sentiments. The first thing I wanna say is, um, she recognizes talent, and she brings and has brought talent to the school. I have two daughters, one who graduated from University Southern California. Go Trojans, um, who is a film major, um, in cinematic arts, as well as my daughter, who is still here. She actually speaks Spanish. She's a Spanish major, as well as an econ major from Spelman College. Go HBCUs, yes. And when my daughters graduated, like most parents, every child, every man, woman, child in my house has to work. Period. Right? And so immediately, the first thing I said was, "You need to, you know, go to 163" because I had such an amazing experience working here ten years ago. They applied for a teacher assistance position, um, and I think that the assistant superintendent who interviewed them walked into your office and said, um, "We have two wonderful sisters. Um, their names are Alexis and Ashley." And she said, "The Clark sisters?" And she immediately called me. She was like, "They have graduated from amazing universities, University Southern California and Spelman College. We want them to work here in the district." Ashley worked over at Barack Obama. She taught them, um, how to do creative writing. She taught them how to do editorial, um, programming. She taught them how to use a green screen. She did videos every single day for Blackhawk. She taught them how to use the cameras. Um, and then she went back to California because she is a film major. But she had an amazing experience for a semester at Blackhawk, I'm sorry, at, um, Barack. And she really made a difference in the kids' lives and taught them something that they probably would not have, uh, been able to be, uh, exposed to. Alexis, my other daughter, is, uh, a Spanish-speaking, uh, she's part of the ESL program here at the school. And she has had a wonderful experience with those Spanish-speaking students who are in the district. And so they would not be here if it was not for Dr. White. I would not be here if it was not for Dr. White. I always say that I'm here because I choose to be here, and it's a blessing. A lot of people have to be, you know, work for certain reasons. I'm here because I care about the community. I care about the kids. Dr. Anderson knows that. I always say that I'm here because I choose to be here. And that's because of Dr. White specifically. I love every single kid in our district, in our school. I taught kindergarten here at this school. I teach summer school here because I choose to. Let me be clear. We have multiple businesses in my family. My husband is highly successful. I choose to be in this district because of Dr. White. I choose to be here because I care about these kids. I care about our community. Okay, one last thing I wanna say. The organization that I belong to, we do partnership with, uh, Dr. White and 163. We have mentoring programs here because of Dr. White. Over at, we have, it's called Youth Leadership Institute, over at the junior high. We provide food for kids every single Friday. It's called the CHIP program. Every single Friday, we feed kids, those kids who are, have food insecurities. We provide food for them on Fridays so they can go home and have food for the weekend. Why do we have that? Because of Dr. White. And, yes, we do. In addition to that, we have financial workshops. Am I right, Dr. Anderson? Over at Blackhawk to teach kids financial literacy with different banks that have come in to teach the kids. You know why? Because of Dr. White and my relationship with her. She also reaches out to business owners. She reaches out to businesses, to legislative. Um, she has a very strong relationship, not just with the school, but with others outside of the school to bring resources in for our community. And so with that said, I am, you know, really very emotional because she's such a wonderful person. She cares, she loves, and she is someone who is, uh, not deserving of what she's receiving today. So I really hope that you reverse your decision. I hope that you take all these different sentiments that you're hearing today and that you make a modification in your decision and allow her to continue in her role. Thank you very much.
Well, many of you guys know, many of the teachers know that I've been very concerned about teacher retention, the climate of the schools. I've been in the schools. When teachers came and made complaints about things going on in the schools, I actually went to see for myself what was going on. I also, earlier this year, uh, brought to Dr. White about doing a survey of the teachers so that we could understand what's going on in our schools, what we can do to retain our, our, uh, teachers. So, um, she ended up, uh, with her team creating a state, um, I forget exactly, a state survey that was administered to the staff, uh, certified and classified, uh, from the period of May 5th through May 11th. So I want you guys to keep in mind that we were, this board, this board that you see before us, we were seated as this board on May 4th. So these responses reflect the prior board. One of the things I looked at was, do, with the question that asked, "Do you feel that the leadership values your input?" When it came to the Board of Education, seventy-five point three percent of respondents did not answer positively that the board valued their input. I also wanna mention before I go on that just, I, I think it was a little under half of the employees took the survey, and as Ms. Morris said, there was concern about, uh, from the employees about taking the survey in the first place because it was administered through the district. The, the survey, I wanted to do what would have been completely, uh, by a third party. When it came to the district administration, when asked, "Do you feel that the leadership values your input?" The answer was that sixty-one point two percent of the respondents did not answer affirmatively. When it came to the building administration, the answer was that twenty-six point nine of the respondents did not answer affirmatively. So what that told me was that we have issues with this district. We have issues with the board. We have issues with the district administration. And that's something that we need to address because when, when we talk about the children, when we talk about their education, that education is coming from our staff members, our teachers, our teachers assistants, parent professionals, everyone in the school building. So we need to make sure, just like we do in airplanes, put on your mask before you put on anybody else's mask. The climate in the schools has been declining, and that's something that I've wanted to address for years. When it came to employees who felt, uh, it was asked, "Who feel that they have the opportunity to grow professionally?" Fifty-one people agreed, and eighty-three people did not agree. Beyond that, there have been issues involving students with, where there is bullying going on in the schools. There are fights going on. Excuse me, it is my time to speak. It is my time to speak, I respect you. So, as I was saying, I have witnessed student fights.
Her other sister was fired from the district. It's been a history.
Madam President, ask the floor.
School District 159, do your research. Her mother was on that board. Her mother, her sister served in over the chief financial officer. And now, her sister was terminated from 159 for abusing a kid and came over here and verbally abused a kid and was terminated as well. So her point of reference is retaliation.
That is not correct.
Nobody interrupts a student.
That is not correct. And as I was saying about our students, there have been student-on-student fights that have made it to Instagram. And there are police reports.
Can we be respectful of anybody? Of you, of me, of her?
Okay, I will.
We, we shouldn't have a ghetto, excuse my language, ghetto ass meeting. It doesn't matter. Okay, but you spoke. Let her speak. Let him speak. Let them, let them, and let everybody speak.
If you continue to allow them to speak, they're gonna continue doing the same thing.
You spoke.
They're gonna continue doing the same thing. Give them the window to speak, let it keep happening. So what if she can't speak?
So what?
You just said, you said this is a district for the children. What are you teaching those children?
We have had bullying in the community, we have had fights on parents at school events. This stuff is traumatizing to our students. It is important to me, and this is something I've expressed many, many times, that we look at the climate of our schools. We focus on the safety of our students, not only our students, but also our teachers. Bullying has occurred of teachers by students. Some students have been bullied to the point that their parents have decided that it was best to take their children out of our schools. That's not the school district I want my children to have to deal with. That's not the experience of I want any of our community's children to deal with. There have been so many police reports about our schools that when I do FOI requests, I have to get an extension. There are issues in this school district. And I have brought these issues up before. And it is my hope that moving forward with this information that we have from that state survey, and I believe as Morris mentioned, there was another survey that was done before that the board did receive but did not address, which pretty much said what the state survey is saying here. We need to address the issues of the leadership not valuing the input of the people who are charged to do the one job that our school has to do is educate our children. Like I said, if we don't put the mask on ourselves first, we can't help the children. And that is what my focus is. Thank you.
I just have, I just have a quick question about what was just presented, if that's okay? That's why I wanted to hear what you had to say, Ms. DuPay. So with the state survey that was just done and initiated by Dr. White, the information that we received from that, are you saying that removing Dr. White is going to fix all those problems? But that's what's on the table tonight, right? So she hasn't gotten a chance to try to fix that or to address the state or the issues? So... Yes, ma'am? Okay, somebody else want to ask that question?
I'm just trying to figure out, is that, is that going to fix it, moving her?
My name is, I asked the floor, and at this time, I would like to make a comment. My name is Kim Elmore Perkins. My name has been thrown out very much between two members. In particular, two members of the community. Now, first of all, I've heard from you, I've listened, I've taken notes. And the big question on the floor is, why is this happening? You have not gotten a response. Because the response has to do with personal confidential employee information. Something that, something that has been disregarded somewhere in this district, given that a prior board member has taken to the floor to put out personal information about an employee that is currently working in the building, has chosen to embellish the facts of that employee's situation in order to rile up emotion. Now, let's take into consideration the employee that Mr. White has continued to spew out as my husband is an employee at this district. Yes, there was a situation. Mr. White, who was a member of the 2021-2023 Board of Education for this district, who is now a village trustee, has decided for some reason that he needs to take a, an employee's information from wherever he received it and spew it all over the district. I'm appalled by that. However... We're here, we're here to do business. Can you stop talking and allow us to do that? Okay.
That's your problem.
No, my problem is not you. My problem is that you refuse to be transparent. You want to go out and make everyone feel that we are not transparent? Well, let's talk about transparency. The last two and a half years, the people that I have seen in this meeting, in this room and/or the gym, have been the principals and other administrators, members from the union, the board members of 2021-2023.
What are you talking about?
I have not seen...
Why are y'all trying to fire Doc? If you're mad at me, do try it again. It failed. I still got elected, it still won. Till your attempts at everything y'all do fails. Your attempts to hit me and whoever else you tried to hit. The other people that supported y'all campaign, it fails. Why are you firing her if you're mad at me? Take it out with me. I'm big enough to hold it.
Okay, first of all, anyone who ran the agenda, it did not say anything about firing anyone.
Reassign whatever you assign. You know what you're trying to do. We're here to find out what you're trying to do with her. This story that they put out already, they did it, the community still voted for me. So you keep losing and talk about why we here?
If you would stop interrupting, I will.
But you're in some, you're in some extent that we don't know what reassign means.
You have questions? You don't want to listen?
Why are we here for her? Make that clear. Because this is a goofy show and you know, you want to touch...
We are here because Mr. White continues to pull out people's personal information.
That's why we here today. We're firing her because of Mr. White. Did you see this?
And...
The story that the news put in there was about me connected with Dr. White.
More about you, random.
That's the problem. They don't like me because I pull the covers back with everything in Park Forest, even if it's me.
Are you interested in hearing what I have to say?
Not at all.
I was about to, but I can't see that. Mr. White, can you please let her explain herself?
Please, I just want to hear it.
Mr. White, please, just let her talk. I'd like to make a motion to go to closed session.
What about the rest of us?
What about the teachers who are here?
We're sitting right here. We're sitting right here, what about us?
Attorney, can you let her know she got an order? It's booked up from the chair.
Attorney, say something. Hey, we're here. Can I hear you?
Being hereby moved that the Board of Education go into closed session to discuss information regarding the appointment, employment, or dismissal of an employee or officer, contracts and proposal, proposal indications, grievances, negotiations, the sale of real estate, student disciplinary concerns, superintendent's evaluation, or board superintendent goal and concerns. Dr. DuPay?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Elmore Perkins? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Mosby?
I'm calling, go ahead.
I'm getting used to it now, don't worry about it. I know how y'all treat me, so don't worry about it. No. I got two friends.
Motion passes to go to closed session, five to two.
And we are reconvened in open session. May I have a motion to approve interim leave reassignment?
Being hereby moved that the Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing paid administrative leave for the superintendent as discussed in closed session on May 31st, 2023.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. DuPay?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
No.
Ms. McRae?
No.
Oh, gosh. Sorry, guys. Ms. Mosby?
No.
Ms. Elmore Perkins?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Because I'm new at this did, I forgive anybody this time. Motion passes, four to three.
Next on the agenda, motion to approve interim appointment. May I have a roll call? May I have a motion, please?
Being hereby moved that the Board of Education approve the appointment of an interim superintendent as discussed in closed session on May 31st, 2023.
Second.
Don't you think the name I've heard?
Yeah, I think the motion should be to appoint Dr. Joyce Carmee as interim superintendent.
Jackie Jordan.
Okay, I'm going to try to redo this motion completely. What was the amount?
Not to exceed $1,200.
I'm sorry.
Not to exceed $1,200 per day.
The highest-paid superintendent in the state at the time before she left. Matter of fact, the nation that gave multiple contracts to her son, which is facts, is voidable.
Madam President?
Yes.
Being hereby moved that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Joyce Carmee as interim superintendent as, oh, I'm sorry. Let me start over. Being hereby moved that, I'm sorry, can you please let me do this?
Just keep talking.
Joyce Carmee.
Being hereby moved that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Joyce Carmee as interim superintendent
I'm going to be here every week.
At a rate not to exceed 1,200 per day as discussed in closed session on May 31st, 2023.
I hope our negotiations is more like this, so... Second. Please, Ms. Jackie Jordan.
Back in business, put the mags on on purpose. Back in business, contracts for...
I hope our negotiations is mine.
Watch the score on Facebook tonight. I ain't going to stop.
Okay. Dr. DuPay?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Mosby?
No.
Ms. Howard?
No.
Ms. Elmore Perkins?
Yes.
Ms. McRae? Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Motion passes, four to three.
Listen, I ain't focused on this board.
And in the trench.
Trust me, they be going.
Next on the agenda, motion to terminate the recording secretary as discussed in closed session.
Being hereby moved that the Board of Education adopt the resolution to terminate the contract for board recording secretary as discussed in closed session on May 31st, 2023.
May I have a second?
Second.
Should I put the other stuff in the motion that we talked about?
Roll call, please.
We had a discussion in closed session for additional work to further make up pay that she lost. Shouldn't it be part of the motion? Because you can leave here and say, "No, we didn't say that."
Well, she is not our employee, so that would be up to the superintendent. To be her employee at this...
We just said that. We just talked about that. And that was the motion, that's what people agreed to bring the motion forward.
Yes, we did. Yeah.
You can amend the motion to provide that.
Thank you.
Some him.
Okay.
Would that be sufficient?
I'll be here every month.
What did you say?
To make up the difference.
With recommendation from the board?
Yeah, I remember these words.
Just to replace the hours? A recommendation from the board to replace the hours?
So that would be sufficient?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so... Being hereby moved that the Board of Education adopt the resolution to terminate the contract for board recording secretary with the recommendation of the board to replace the hours as discussed in closed session on May 31st, 2023.
Second.
I have to read the name too?
Second? Oh, second, I'm sorry. Yes. You got the second?
Yes.
You supposed to have some new discussions?
We have... Okay. Dr. DuPay?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Mosby?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
What are we doing?
Mr. with the additional hours.
The contract termination of the contract with recommendation for additional hours.
Oh, yes.
Ms. McRae? Ms. Elmore Perkins?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Motion passes, six one. Motion passes, six to one.
Motion to adjourn.
And we have motion to adjourn.
So.